Good evening. We will call to order the Anderson Township Zoning Commission meeting for October twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five. And first, I'd like a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I move to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. A second?
Second.
Could you please call roll, please?
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Eliff?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Ms. DeFoss?
Yes.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for June twenty third, two thousand and twenty five. It does look like we have three of the five attendees. So, a motion to approve the minutes or any adjustments to the minutes as presented to the commission.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Eliff. Could you please call a roll?
Mr. Eliff?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Epstein.
Ms. DeFoss?
Epstein.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes. All right. And on the agenda is a quasi judicial hearing for a planned unit development in case three dash two thousand and twenty five PUD for sixty-two oh one Kellogg Avenue. With a quasi judicial hearing, there is a outline that I need to read. So, please pay attention as I work my way through the encyclopedia, if you remember what those were. So, first, I'll outline the procedures the commission will follow in hearing and deciding this matter under the zoning resolution. Our decision is subject to appeal to the Board of Township Trustees and then to the Court of Common Pleas. As a result, we must employ different procedures from other cases that are typically presented to the zoning commission. Because this is a quasi judicial proceeding, the commission will only receive evidence as to whether the application meets or does not meet the standards and criteria in the zoning resolution. We do not want to hear opinions dis facts relating to compliance with these standards and criteria. As a result, all persons presenting testimony before the commission, whether for or against the applicant's position, may only do so after being sworn in. All witnesses will be subject to cross-examination. The staff will present a summary of the application. The applicant will then present its case. The board members may ask questions of the staff and anyone who speaks on behalf of the applicant. If an attorney presents the case for the applicant, the attorney is not sworn in and is not considered to be a witness. As a result, the attorney's statements are not considered as evidence. Evidence only comes in through the witnesses who testify before the commission after being sworn in. The burden is on the applicant to present evidence that the application satisfies the standards and criteria for approval. If the applicant presents its case through its witnesses, all persons in the audience supporting the application will then be permitted to testify, one at a time, after being recognized by the chairperson. When all persons supporting the application are finished, those opposed to the application will then be permitted to testify after being recognized by the chairperson. If anyone in opposition is represented by an attorney, that party will go first, followed by any members of the audience. As stated previously, all persons wishing to testify, whether for or against the application, may only do so after being sworn in. When testifying, each person from the audience must come forward to the podium after being recognized by the chairperson, speak into the microphone and state their name, address, and any affiliation to the case. All persons testifying will be limited to four minutes unless a commission member requests that they be given additional time. All testimony is directed to the commission only. No comments or questions are redirected to the applicant or anyone else in the audience. The commission will only hear new, non-repetitive evidence or questions. Should someone wish to show support of previous testimony, they may do so by following the testimony procedures and stating their support of previous testimony. Now, will all persons who may give testimony this evening, please stand and raise your right hand? All right, thank you. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God? Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Jury, could you please present the case?
Thank you. This is case three, two thousand and twenty five PUD, planned unit development. The applicant is Scott Kyle, GBBN Architects, who's representing the property owner, River Vision Properties LLC. The location is at sixty-two ten Kellogg Avenue. And this is the address that's in the township. The actual venue is in the city of Cincinnati. It has a different address, but we used... So, there's a different address on your application packet than what's on our staff report, just for clarification. The parcel numbers in the township are book five hundred, page four sixty, parcel seventy-eight, one twenty, and one twenty-eight. And the entire property is in the H Riverfront Zoning District. The request is for a planned unit development approval, and this is to add a thousand four hundred forty-four parking spaces in addition to the parking that's already there for a total of three thousand four hundred forty-two spaces. And these are just the parking spaces in the township. There's additional parking that's proposed in the city of Cincinnati. With this additional parking area, it increases the impervious surface ratio, the ISR, to seventy-four point three percent. And anything over sixty percent in the township requires a PUD review by our zoning commission. So, again, the proposed development is a new parking lot in conjunction with construction of a new venue. And the new venue is in the city of Cincinnati. The existing Riverbend and PNC Pavilion is proposed to remain. This parking lot is going in the location of where the former Coney Island Pool was. So, zoning history, the property where the former Sunlight Pool was, it was sold to Mimi in December of two thousand and twenty-three. And then in two thousand and twenty-four, that's when demolition of the pool and related buildings took place, including filling the pool and covering the surface with gravel. So, this is the property map. This is the jurisdictional line right here, Sutton. This is Sutton. So, anything to the east, southeast, is Anderson Township, and then this area is the city of Cincinnati. The three parcels in the township include this one large parcel here. There was a little sliver of a parcel here, and then this third parcel. So, those are the three parcels that make up the property that is before you tonight. The topography map, the property is in the floodplain, and there is a portion of the property that's also in the floodway. This is an aerial of the site in question. Again, the existing Riverbend, amphitheater, the PNC Pavilion. This is the main entrance that comes into that area, the existing parking on the site. This is where the proposed parking is going. These are some of the structures that were there for the former Coney Island, as well as parking for... extra parking for Riverbend. The zoning district, this is the zoning layer. It's all H, which is riverfront zoning. There is some retail across Kellogg. And then H pretty much follows the floodplain, and then there's single family up on top of the hill. So, this is the entire site, the overall site plan. Again, Sutton and Kellogg. In the township, the township portion, the existing Riverbend, the lawn area, the PNC Pavilion. This is the existing parking lot that was there for... that was shared between Coney and Riverbend. This is the proposed parking that's before you tonight that will increase the ISR of the site. And again, the ISR was based off of the three parcels in the township. Again, the two venues in the township are proposed to remain. This is the proposed new venue in the city of Cincinnati in this particular area here, and then additional parking in the city of Cincinnati. Some of this was existing, some of this would be new. This is grass overflow lot. And again, this portion is in the city of Cincinnati, and this is the portion that's in the township. This is the map that delineates the impervious surface ratio, identified in pink there, the new. And then this is the proposed new parking area. In your packet, it included construction drawings for the parking lot, but on your... in the presentation, we're just showing you the landscaping plan. That way, you could see the proposed landscaping. So, in addition to the land... the parking area, landscaping is proposed along Kellogg Avenue. Replacement of the chain link fence to an ornamental aluminum fence to match the existing is proposed. And we'll go through the next two slides, which are the rest of the parking area and the rest of the frontage. Additional landscaping is proposed as well, and this was a discussion with Riverbend when we had our pre-submitting meetings in lieu of having internal landscaping islands, which is a requirement of the zoning resolution, to focus more along the roadway, which was in keeping with our Kellogg Gateway Plan. Same way with the fence. And then also, if you can see, there is a sidewalk that is proposed along the frontage of the parking area. So, this is the slide, just, you know, do the parking area, just do east, and then continuation of that landscaping. Another portion of their plan is also identifying future development pads within the parking area. This was also a recommendation of our Ohio Riverfront Plan, as well as our Kellogg Gateway Study. There was one proposed in this area, the parking, as well as an additional area on this side of the parking area. This is just an exhibit, color exhibit, to better delineate where this... a proposed sidewalk is identified on the plan, as well as additional landscaping and replacement of the fence. Other components of this is to maintain some of the buildings of... I don't know if they are considered historic, but maybe it's historic significance. I don't think... I don't know if they're on the historic register or not, but some of the buildings for this property, site preservation, this is the stone towers. You're getting to the site off of the river. The former Moonlight Gardens Building, the administration building, and then the Moonlight Pavilion, as well as some of the groves in this particular area of the site. These are some drone shots that we took, the existing Riverbend and PNC Pavilion. This is looking north, northwest toward I two seventy-five. And then the new venue is proposed in this particular area here. This is where the proposed parking is in the township, and then this is the site that's under construction with Lake Como and the additional parking around Lake Como. Again, the gravel parking lot that's before you tonight. These are just some site photos, just to give you an idea of where the new pavilion... while the new venue is to be constructed, it will be built out of the floodplain. So, this kind of gives you an idea of the height of... gives you a little bit of perspective when you're on the ground of what... where the construction would actually start for the new venue. This is looking generally south. The river's in the background, and then this is looking on the riverside, looking back toward Kellogg. These are some of the streetscaping photos that we took. This area is on Kellogg, looking to the east, looking toward Belterra, the township's parking lot for the trails across the street. This is another perspective. There is a signal there, this signal at the entrance of Belterra. This is looking toward the other direction, toward the west, toward two seventy-five. The chain link fence is proposed to be replaced with ornamental aluminum landscaping and a sidewalk along this portion of the property. And this gives you an idea of some of the existing landscaping that's there now. This is a shot of the main entrance into the new parking area that would be just to the left, and there would also be parking along this main entrance. Other existing... the existing sign, this is in the city of Cincinnati, but this is the approach from the west as you're going east into the site, just landscaping out in the front entrance. And then this is just kind of looking across the street to give you an idea of... there is a parking lot across the street. This is where the township starts. This is where the proposed sidewalk would connect to an existing sidewalk in the city of Cincinnati. There is an existing sidewalk that comes out of California that stops here at Sutton. All right, so with this being a PUD, staff goes through, first, we identify areas that are not in compliance with the zoning resolution. We only list the areas that are not... generally, the plan is consistent. These are the only areas that it's not in compliance with the zoning resolution. So, the first one is sidewalks to a right-of-way, and there are sidewalks proposed along Kellogg in the right-of-way, but staff is recommending that a pedestrian plan be submitted. There was a basic general pedestrian plan that showed arrows of where they expect pedestrians to go. The staff feels that more of a plan to show how the pedestrians are being moved through the parking lot from the sidewalks along Kellogg into the venue. Article five point three... I'm sorry, I skipped one. Article five point three D nine bicycle parking is required, so we're recommending that's... and this could be for patrons, it could be for employees, but identify areas on the property for bicycle parking. And then article five point three E required number of spaces. So, the applicant did... and it was mentioned in the traffic impact study, some parking counts, especially on the township side, but it didn't necessarily identify the total number of parking spaces, whether it be onsite or shared in the application. So, the capacity was provided. So, the new venue, the capacity is nineteen thousand five hundred. With Riverbend, it's twenty-one thousand five hundred, and then PNC is four thousand four hundred fifty-one. So, the township minimum requirements are for one space per four persons of capacity. And so, staff is recommending that this total be provided so that we will know that there is adequate parking on the site. With that, it would be five thousand three hundred seventy-five spaces would be needed. So, we're requesting a total number. Lighting, and this was clarified by the applicant. We requested a revised photometric plan to show foot candles at the property line, and one was submitted, but we couldn't read it. So, that was... we couldn't see it. So, we just asked that a revised plan be submitted that's legible, that we could see, to ensure compliance. And then article five point three eleven six refers to interior parking lot landscaping. Like we mentioned before, with this being the type of events, property with the three venues, and the applicant is trying to take advantage of, you know, compacting the parking together. And so, we've recommended that landscaping, in lieu of the interior landscaping islands, be focused on the streetscape along Kellogg, which is compliant and consistent with our Kellogg's Gateway Plan. So, that is what the applicant has shown on their plans, and so if the zoning commission agrees, that would be a variance that they are requesting. With the PUD, we're also looking at the township's adopted plans. So, the first one is our Anderson Township Comprehensive Plan. And the Comprehensive Plan also incorporates our Ohio Riverfront Plan. So, there's a couple of references in the staff report that go back and forth. The Comprehensive Plan was our last adopted plan. It included the Ohio Riverfront Plan, which the language is a little bit older, but the goals are still the same. So, first and foremost, with the future land use designation of this area, it is identified as entertainment commercial, and the proposed use of the parking lot and the music venues is consistent with this future land use. Different goals of the Land Use and Development Chapter. Again, the... it's a regional entertainment destination, while also protecting existing residential character and creating diverse and new housing options. Also, the Ohio Riverfront Plan, again, some of these are repetitive because they're in both plans, but encourages the other area to be year-round entertainment, year-round use versus only seasonal. So, that is the applicant proposing some development pads down there for the potential in the future for that made to happen. Again, same... similar condition with the Ohio Riverfront Plan. Objective number one point five was to develop a scenic and multi-use river walk through the entertainment district of the Ohio Riverfront area, and the applicant stated in their application that they would be open to potentially allowing access to the river. So, that would be consistent with our Ohio Riverfront Plan. Kellogg Gateway Study, we talked about streetscape elements along Kellogg Avenue, lighting. The township started implementation of the Kellogg Gateway Plan with the interchange enhancements. That was... the Kellogg Gateway Study was started in two thousand and twenty, and it was later adopted a couple of years later. And then the township started implementing some of the public portions of that plan. But once Coney Island was sold to Mimi, it was... or Riverbend, it was unclear what the future of that area was going to be. So, the township stopped implementing the plan until we figured out what was going on with some of those properties down there. The applicants in their application have demonstrated carrying on the goals of our Kellogg Gateway Study, which include the fencing, the consistent fencing, the extra landscaping, the pedestrian connections along Kellogg Avenue. And then the plan is consistent with the design guidelines for landscaping. So, bear with me as I go through most of these. I just want to make sure we hit everything and I didn't miss anything. But the recommendation of staff was to approve the PUD application, and these are the fifteen criteria that are in the zoning resolution. So, number one, we felt that it is consistent with underlying zoning district of H. It's consistent with the vision and goals the Board of Trustees has outlined in the township adopted plans, including the Anderson Plan, the Kellogg Gateway Study, and the Ohio Riverfront Plan, as well as our Trails and Walkway Plan, in addition to the Land Use and Development Chapter. Number three, the parking lot is compatible with the surrounding entertainment uses, including the existing Riverbend and PNC Pavilion, as well as Belterra Park. Number four, the physical features enable protection of the surrounding property and coordinate improvement of property in the vicinity in the site. The construction timeline was completion in spring of two thousand and twenty-seven. It is serviced adequately and efficiently by public services. There was a letter from Cincinnati Waterworks and MSD in your packet. Number seven, there are... this was about preserving historic features on the property, and that was already shown in one of the slides, some of the items that they're proposing to maintain. Number eight, again, we talked about the only variance request is for the interior landscaping idol... or interior landscaping islands, and staff is supportive of this in lieu of that adding additional landscaping along Kellogg. Number nine, staff recommends a site plan that shows pedestrian connectivity, which we had mentioned before. Number ten, acoustical screening was not provided, but this is more geared toward the parking lot and not the music venue itself, since the new music venue is not in the township. We really don't have authority on the acoustics of the new venue. And the existing venues are not proposed to change. Number eleven, the development does not include dedicated open space, but in lieu, they did mention adding potential access to the river, as well as moving the landscaping along the roadway. Number twelve, staff was of the opinion it was not going to be detrimental to present and potential surrounding uses. The venue itself, in some way or fashion, whether it was Coney Island, Riverbend, PNC, Belterra Park, there has been entertainment uses down in that area for over a hundred and fifty years. And I didn't mention, but earlier, the new venue actually has less capacity than the existing Riverbend. Number thirteen, this is an area that we feel more information is needed regarding... consistent with recommendations from county, state, or federal agencies specifically on traffic. Traffic impact study was submitted, but we didn't have letters from ODOT, the county engineer, if they have reviewed the traffic impact study, if they have approved it, if they have reviewed the traffic management plan that was submitted. So, we feel that more information is needed. We did talk about consistency with township goals through our Comprehensive Plan. And number fifteen, the site is located in the floodplain, but we did not receive any correspondence from Hamilton County Stormwater and Infrastructure or any other agencies that have authority along that floodplain and floodway. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. I can put it back on the main site plan.
Thank you, Mr. Jury. Greatly appreciated. Ms. Ward, any questions of staff or Mr. Jury?
I wanted to understand what the development pads are. Could you explain more what those are and what they're for?
I'm sorry, what the development? I didn't hear.
There were two development pads in the parking?
The development pads. So, our plans, specifically the Ohio Riverfront Plan, mentioned the area... township goals in the area to have year-round uses down there instead of just seasonal uses. So, we've been discussing that with the owners of Riverbend to... are there opportunities to implement that plan? So, when Riverbend is not having concerts or during the winter time, you know, is there an opportunity to have more year-round uses? So, their response to that was to show potential development pads for development of... whether it be restaurant use, retail use, some type of use in the future.
Thank you.
So, no definitive plan, but it is identified in the parking area.
Ms. DeFossi, any questions of Mr. Jury or staff?
I don't have any questions, but I do really appreciate the detailed report that you prepared.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, Paul. The... is there coordination with the city of Cincinnati? Since we're half of it in the parking area, the other half, but they have the venue along the street, along Kellogg, for the sidewalk that's there to extend it, or we're going to widen it?
So, the path that was brought out of California is a wider sidewalk. It's an expansion of the Ohio River Trail is what it is, and it comes to the intersection of Sutton. And then, of course, the township's Ohio River Trail is on the other side.
Right.
Right. So, there hasn't been any more coordination with that, because that was, you know, following up from our Ohio Riverfront Plan, or I'm sorry, Ohio River Trail Plan. We really haven't had much coordination yet about landscaping or seen any landscaping or other plans in that particular area.
Okay. I guess I would encourage the width of ours sidewalk on that side be the same as Cincinnati's. It would be well-used. So, this is a PUD. What did... we don't go through one previously, or it's grandfathered?
It was grandfathered, yes.
Okay. Is there anything in our zoning about walking paths or inside within a parking lot?
There's no specific requirements, other than a connection needs to be made from the sidewalk along the street to the front door of the business or the building that's on that property.
Just on the sheer volume and having gone to activities, I would... again, I would encourage having something internal to the parking lot. The site preservation of the four structures, we really have nothing to do with that. Those are all in the city, correct?
Yes, except for the structure, like the entrance structure.
The...
Right. A portion of that would be in the township.
And the one in four parking spots, one for every four patrons, is that what they do about employees?
That's incorporated into our parking.
So, if it's twenty-one thousand or nineteen thousand?
It's based off of the capacity, and that includes employees.
So, there's a buffer.
Right. There's a buffer.
All right, thanks. No other questions?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Eliff. Thank you.
Just a couple for Paul. Just looking at the Anderson area only, is the parking required? I mean, this is quite a few new parking spaces, but looking just at Riverbend today, when there's a, like a concert there or something, is it reliant on the parking in the city of Cincinnati? In other words, over in Coney Island to have sufficient parking? Or is there sufficient parking in Anderson Township to serve that today?
I'm going to defer to the applicant on that one and let them explain it, because that was one of our questions as well.
Okay. All right.
And I mean, a parking... shared parking agreement was submitted as part of the application.
Yeah, I saw that old shared parking agreement.
Yes, but I think that's a good question for the applicant.
Okay. And then, so I think when I was looking at the stuff, there's an Exhibit D that's got several pages on it. But one of the things that struck me as important, if this... if we recommend approval of this, is a couple of the things on the Exhibit D which are beneficial to Anderson Township. And it's the... it's this page that says innovative design. Well, they all... they're all Exhibit D, and they say innovative design, but there's a table on it that says... one is Anderson requirement, proposed sidewalk from Sutton Road to Belterra. And then in their table, it says a six-foot sidewalk to be provided. And then it's, the second thing it talks about is substituting the substituting a decorative fence for the chain link fence, right? And then thirdly, talks about the landscaping. I know we need a variance for that, but the other, so my question for you, Paul, is if this is recommended approval, do those have to be conditions? Or are those in the plan documents, so if the plan were approved, they're in there, or do those have to be conditions of approval? Those items?
Well, the plans that we have are very small. I scaled out the sidewalk to be five feet versus six feet.
Yeah.
Very small, so it's hard to know.
Or I didn't see it.
Yes.
But it does say six foot on here, but I don't see it on the plans necessarily.
It was difficult to scale that out, so I think if you agree with this, I would condition it.
Okay.
To make sure that it's included.
Got it, okay. And then the landscaping, so we've got a lot of impervious surface being added. There's already a lot down there. And, but my question was, if you don't know this, it's fine, but if if all the landscaping islands and stuff were installed as required, would would we have even a problem here? Would we even be sitting here because the impervious surface ratio would be met? I'm just wondering. I didn't do the math on it. I think it would still be short, but
I think it's still short, because the former impervious surface was just over sixty percent.
Okay, and I I saw this plan, this drawing showing the enhancements along the road. Is is that voluntary, or is that something that's required under our code? I see it's structured as kind of a trade-off, but if we didn't trade off, would that still have to go there?
So if the minimum is one tree per thirty feet, and then one tree, I mean, I'm one, I'm sorry, one tree, yes, per thirty, and then one shrub per five, so we didn't do the calculations if it met the minimum. I mean, it exceeds the minimum, of course, because of the trade-off between the interior landscaping, so it is more than what the minimum is required.
So it's been enhanced?
Yes, it's being enhanced.
Okay, okay, I got it. The sidewalk, back to the sidewalk again. And it, on this drawing, it it ends at the property limits. Is that going, is that connect, or is there going to be a gap? I didn't notice when I was out there.
There will be a gap on Belterra's property. There is right-of-way to potentially extend the sidewalk to the signal. I think that would be the end goal, is to extend it to the signal where you could cross Kellogg at the signal.
Up in front of Belterra?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah, so it doesn't, okay.
Currently, they're, right, they're just showing it across their front edge of their property.
So there's right-of-way in there, it could be extended down there?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. I think most of my questions are for the applicants, so thank you, Mr. Drury and staff. So now if the applicant would like to speak and present their case, if, I assume you're attorney, since you are not sworn in?
Yes, sir. Kit Houston Taplaw, on behalf of the property owners. I think the applicant's listed as Scott. We don't represent Scott, but we do represent the property owners. Trust everybody got a copy of this, but just to be safe, I was going to read through it word for word. Just kidding. I think Paul did a great job. I sat on the board of zoning appeals here, so I, if someone said that to me, I'd have the same response. Paul did a great job with with the summary there. We'll just add a few things, a few points of clarification, but most of the details will come from the design team, which is this, basically this side of the room. But amongst those various professionals, we'll be able to get the answers you're looking for. A few points of clarity, though, there are currently no resident, or I'm sorry, retail pads. Those are just portions of the site that could be used for pads in the future. The whole design of this was done to preserve the trees and as many of the existing structures as we could, which is why we need the parking where it's at. If for some reason we didn't get that, then it would have to go on the city side, and, you know, a lot of clear cutting would happen. So this is, this was the best way to lay out the site to allow for future development that could help enhance the business district. But there's no current physical pads on site. As Paul indicated, we work directly with staff to try to make sure that this development's consistent with the Anderson plans, and we believe that it is. I believe staff believes so as well. The interior pedestrian traffic, stormwater management, consistency with federal state requirements, photometrics, total parking count, and correspondence with ODOT will be answered by the design team. I will say that in regard to the parking, the entire site is designed to use both the city portion and the Anderson portion to lean on each other for parking requirements. But we can tell you that at any given, at every given time, not any, at every given time, we will be in compliance with both city parking requirements and Anderson parking requirements, meaning that we won't have, we won't exceed occupancy in either venue unless there is adequate assigned parking for each of those. So I think that, hopefully that clears that up. But as far as the specifics of how many parking spaces are on Anderson versus in the city, I'll rely on the design team for that. But at all times, it'll be operated in compliance with with both city and Anderson zoning codes. As far as acoustical screening, it's pointed at Kentucky, so it was kind of designed in a manner where, at least for the Anderson side of the river, it's naturally designed to be, you know, naturally acoustically screened, just by the way the venue's facing. And while there is no dedicated open space, it is designed where we preserved as much of the green space as we could, which is, you know, somewhat of an open space, just not dedicated. As far as the bike rack, applicant's happy to do that. We question whether we would want to do that in this situation. At least, do we want bike traffic on nights where concerts are being held? Happy to do that. It's a low-cost item for us and not a problem at all, but would like the commission to consider that. As far as the existing buildings on site and preserving those, as we represented in our application, we're making efforts and want to preserve those, but I believe as Mr. Lewis indicated, those are on city property. I think at this time, we know that the gate and the stone tower are structurally sound. The other ones, you know, one of the buildings was condemned at some point in recent history, so we're still working on that to figure out what can be preserved, but there is certainly a desire there to preserve as much of it as we can, because it adds character. So with that, I will turn it over to the design team to hopefully answer the specifics, unless the commission has any questions for me. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Scott Kyle. I'm with GBBN Architects. That's three thirty-two East Eighth Street, Cincinnati, four five two oh two. I am, GBBN is the architect in charge of the project. I'm the project manager representing everybody that's involved on the design side. So I'm really just introducing myself, and then I'm going to introduce the engineers, but since I am listed as the applicant, I wanted to present. We, once, once the ownership acquired the formerly owned Coney Island property in twenty twenty-three, it became a hundred and twenty total acres across township and city property, or jurisdictions, excuse me. At that point, we began design work on what's represented on the screen at the moment, which is a new outdoor amplified music venue for nineteen thousand five hundred patrons. And it is designed to be a state-of-the-art facility as we move into the future. The request for the parking lot and the related PUD request, the details of that will be represented by Clangers, and I defer to them now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Unless there are questions, I guess.
I'd recommend to the board, we hear the whole design team, and then we ask questions of the whole design team. Is that okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Honkamp?
Great. Luther, thank you. Commission appreciate being here. My name's Craig Honkamp with the Clangers Group. We're the civil engineers, surveyors, and landscape architects for the project. And so with me also to help answer any questions, I'll do this kind of presentation right now, but to help answer any technical questions, then, Mark Nold is here. He's our senior traffic engineer, and has been the traffic engineer for the township and and Coney Island and MEMI all along for this whole Kellogg Avenue corridor, so super experienced and knowledgeable there, and has coordinated a lot with Matt Dunn at MEMI about the operations and how every, how all the traffic moves and flows, and the coordination with ODOT, Hamilton County Engineers Office, and the City of Cincinnati. And then also is Jessica Rybold. Jessica is on our landscape architect team. She has been in many of the meetings with city staff when we were talking about the landscaping for the parking lot, and how to meet the gateway, the Kellogg Avenue gateway corridor plan and stuff like that. So if there's some technical details on that, she may kind of jump in and help answer some questions there. And then also Megan Sigmund is with us. She's on the civil engineering side to help with where we went through all of our drainage calculations and analysis and stuff for stormwater and floodplain and stuff like that. So if we have any questions there, she may also jump in to help. Grab the cursor here, and yep, that, the pointer works, but I guess you guys, you guys can't actually see the cursor, right? Because that would only see there for the audience to be able to see, so I'll try not to use that then if I use the laser pointer or something. So I shouldn't need to do that, but if I do, I'll make sure to be very verbal about what I'm pointing to or explaining. And then, so yeah, I just want to run through, yeah, Paul did an excellent job going through it, and I'm just going to hit a couple of highlights really quick. And then I'm going to circle back to some of the questions that were brought up after I go through some of these slides then, and try to answer some of those questions a little bit proactively, and then, yeah, we'll be able to open up then to any of your other questions then that may come up. So yeah, you've seen table contents, the application letter, and here's then, kind of as Paul went through all the conditions of the code, then, these were our responses then of trying to address all of the conditions of the code that are the guiding principles of whether the parking lot would be approved or not. So that was all a narrative there. The zoning map, in case we need to refer back to that. Land use plan, this was all in that hundred and some packet that Kit had up there. Just in case we need to refer to anything, though, and this was part of the Ohio Riverfront Plan then, and kind of basically trying to show the compliance. We've seen that one. The zoomed-in versions in the ISR, so this sheet here then was the, so to the question of would we still be here tonight if we swapped out the landscaping, yeah, when you see that the original was grandfathered in, and it was sixty-nine point two percent for forty-nine, or excuse me, thirty-four acres of impervious area, and then the proposed one up to seventy-four, and this does meet the the square footage of landscaping that would be in the additional parking lot has been basically, has been moved and met along Kellogg Avenue then, so that same square footage has been traded off, so we would still be here, is the short answer to that question, yes. And then, yes, this is basically showing the open space for the entire development then, just kind of painting a bigger picture. And I think it is important to note then that larger area of the Coney Grove and the Old Coney Mall and stuff like that, and a lot of the large mature trees as you head down towards towards the Ohio River. And I would think, yeah, as everybody is aware, the parking is a, you know, a necessary need for having a large music venue here. And over the past several years, as Scott mentioned, that we've been working with the owner, we did many, many concepts of how to lay out parking and where the opportunities are and how to do it. That is the most sensitive environmentally, and this works with the site, and able to preserve as much as we could. And yeah, landed on basically the plan that you see in front of us, and trying to also be sensitive to what can be grass parking, what can be most, makes the most sense as being paved parking. And you helped arrive at this concept layout, but it was not through a lot of very hard diligent work and coordination with a lot of entities and parties on the owner's side and the design team's side. As Jess, as was pointed out, we did do have, if we need to back up and look at the code or anything like that, and this is a chart that Jessica helped put together then to, you know, analyze exactly what's in the code and what we're meeting, and how that relates then from what, if we would have done a traditional parking, the the added parking would have been landscaped traditionally versus the extra that we've provided here. And this is what, through some of our meetings this spring and summer with staff, we're basically saying, hey, we really feel like there's more value, there's more value to the community to put that buffer and to put that green space and to put that landscaping up along here, and it works more in conjunction with the with the vision of this corridor, then to really kind of try to do that and get the sidewalk there, and to get the fence there, the upgraded fence and stuff, and so that's where, yeah, we we had those meetings with staff and felt like this was a good win-win solution for everybody versus strictly implementing the code verbatim and not end up with, you know, kind of the synergies that we all felt like this plan ends up with. And then, yeah, pedestrian circulation, we may have misunderstood, Mr. Drury, and exactly what we needed to provide for this, because, yeah, we were intending to show then, yeah, this is the pedestrian circulation pathways and along Kellogg Avenue. But yes, if we need to work with staff still as a condition to make sure that we show the proper diagrams or whatever, that would show this a little bit better. We're happy to do that then, but this was basically kind of trying to show how everybody then, if you're parked in any of these parking lots then, would arrive at or walk over to the new venue then. And this kind of also works hand in hand then with some of the traffic operations plans then as well. So, but trying to show the pedestrian circulation pathways. Yeah, and we can dive into that further then if you guys have questions and stuff, so the site preservation slide was covered, emergency, the essential services and stuff, and just the emergency vehicle access pathways. And yeah, we've worked with City of Cincinnati Fire Department and had our meetings there and everything of how they're able to access the site from an EMS and anything in the emergency situation, and making sure that that's always going to be open, free, and clear, even during any kind of a concert or anything like that. There'll be no blockages to that. And it just happens to be all basically coming in from the City of Cincinnati side. While you can come in from the Anderson side and get through there, like some of those pedestrian pathways would show, but it's a little bit more congested to come in through the Anderson way, so it's the dominant pathway, or these here shown in red. And then here, and I know, yeah, just in case we, and we can, you know, if we needed to, to zoom into these, and I know you guys in your packet had the full long roll sheets of them and stuff like that, but this is where, and I know over several years, there was a lot of conversation on Kellogg and meeting with Belterra and MEMI and the township and ODOT and all the stakeholders of different things that can be done and recommendations that came out of that, and then how this moving of the venue over to this side really the minimal impacts, and that's, I'll come back to that question a little bit later about coordination with ODOT and City of Cincinnati and stuff, and Hamilton County, and how they view the traffic. But for right now, I'll just say that we do have these, and so these four sheets then are existing conditions pre-concert, and then existing conditions post-concert, and then we have new proposed conditions pre-concert and new proposed conditions post-concert. So you see all four of those scenarios, scenarios, existing and proposed, and then before concert and after concert. Then, and one thing that you'll note here too is the parking to the north of Kellogg, the blue shaded boxes there, and most all the traffic engineers and everybody that's dealing with this site, the operators and everything, feel like really trying to not have that pedestrian traffic crossing Kellogg is a big benefit to what is happening here then, and then, yeah, the gates and stuff, and like, gate, all the gates and entry points are otherwise pretty much staying the same. So, and we can talk more about the traffic impact study and these specific, get, zoom in and get into specific lane, turn lanes, and anything like that that you need to, and how this would be operated before and after concert, and how, you know, where they close the orange shaded areas, or where they, you know, close off-roads and do different things before and after the concert, so got a lot of great detail there, and a lot of, a lot of meetings and time and effort went into producing those. And then, yeah, the MSD sewer availabilities and waterworks availabilities, and I can go into ODOT and Hamilton County in a minute when I hit the questions then. Schedule was also something that was asked for, and as Mr. Drury already said, yes, working, and Mr. Kyle already said too, working to open by twenty twenty-seven, concert season twenty twenty-seven. And I think that is where I'm going to stop, because the rest then, oh, photometrics, yep, photo, and then the traffic, right. So, yeah, and the photometrics. So yeah, and the photometrics, Mr. Drewry, we do have another copy of those that may be more clear. And we're happy to submit either a large full-size plan or anything like that then to make sure that the numbers are legible. That comes through in there to make sure that, yeah, that we are meeting the requirements of the foot candles at the right of way line. Which is what the photometric shows that we are meeting the code requirements for that. So no variance was needed or anything like that. Yeah, and then the traffic impact study, bunches of pages there in case we need it. And then the last thing, after the photo impact, after the photometric, excuse me, after the traffic impact study. Was the construction drawings, the construction documents. We provided about ten pages of the site survey. Demolition plan, location plan, utility plan and grading plan for the actual parking lot itself. So we can dive into any particular storm sewer runs or anything like that that you wanted. Okay, so now the last part of what I wanted to present was just kind of circling back to some of the items in the questions then. So one I wrote down was the pedestrian plan and I already addressed that, that yeah, we will or can provide something additional. As far as a graphic or a drawing or a plan. The sidewalk is yes, correct, the six feet and apologize. We debated internally whether, cause these drawing sheets instead of being twenty four by thirty six or thirty by forty two. They're actually thirty six by forty eight. So they're three feet by four feet. And we just thought that that printing out ten copies of all those pages would be a little much. And so we did the, so it is the scale, but it is a half-size drawing. And that made some of the text labels just a little bit hard. If you're viewing the hard copies. But obviously in the PDF you can zoom in and see them then. And I was like, how many people are you using, looking at the PDFs? Versus looking at the hard copies? I know we're given both, but. So we elected then, so yeah, we can provide full-size, the thirty six by forty eight sheets and stuff too if needed for that. Bike, bike parking, Mr. Houston already hit on that, that we can provide that and work with staff to see what we need to do. If that's, if we feel like bike parking is an integral as through our conversation tonight. If we feel like that is an integral component that's necessary, then we can work with staff to see how we can implement that. And where, what makes the most, I guess, yeah, really what makes, makes the most sense. When you think about the vehicular traffic and traffic patterns, then where can we allow bikes? Where would they be coming from and going to? And then where we would provide them. So it all kind of works and makes sense. There was the question about the number of parking spaces. So Mr. Drewry stated that fifty three seventy five was the required number of parking. The proposed, let me go back to a better diagram. I guess I was stuck on that. Sorry for a while. The proposed parking, uh-oh, there it goes, sorry. Yeah, this is just as good then here. So the proposed parking then for the entire campus then is approximately sixty three hundred, sixty three forty eight. Is the number that we have that's up here on this, so six thousand three hundred and forty eight. So well exceeding the five thousand three hundred and seventy five.
I apologize for interrupting.
Yeah.
Does the six thousand three hundred and forty eight include the grass parking or is it just the pay?
Correct. That does include the grass parking as well. Yep.
Thank you. Sorry, I.
Yeah, no.
This was a perfect time to ask that. Thank you.
Yeah, good. And then, so I talked about photometrics already. We hit the landscape variance that's needed. Traffic, I'll wait and see if anything else, I guess you guys to ask questions of us then of what you may need for there. And so I want to hit then before I circle onto a couple of the other items. Where we're at in the permitting process as you've asked and stuff is, you know, where we're at there. So on the City of Cincinnati side for the venue, we obtained a permit for, you know, moving all the earthwork and stuff. That Mr. Drewry showed in the photographs and stuff like that. All of that was permitted. We went in for a second permit in the summertime for all of our water and sanitary and utility. An early site package basically on the City of Cincinnati side. And that's all been permitted and approved. And so right now they're, they're just starting to implement utility construction stuff on the Cincinnati side. And then the, we're in for a permit on the City of Cincinnati side for the music venue then for the actual building permit. And everything else that comes with it. Oh, with the utilities also included early foundations and footers and some of that below grade. Stuff that the contractors always like to get started on early and stuff. So that was with that utility package that's been permitted. And then on the Anderson Township, Hamilton County side, we have not submitted that permit yet to get that constructed. However, is what we've done really, I was going to say twenty twenty, yeah, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Early conversations and then recent ones all the way through this spring. We have coordinated with Mohammed Islam at Hamilton County Public Works. And coordinated all the stormwater requirements, water quality, stormwater management and made sure that that is implemented into this. But since we have not submitted it actually in for the permit, he hasn't, yeah, signed off and granted approval. But conceptually, he's one hundred percent on board with everything that we're doing and showing there. We've had meetings and phone calls, several meetings and phone calls with him over the past year and a half, two years on what this. Is this developed from the, you know, demolition to the stone to the new parking lot that it is? And then we've also had coordination and made submittals as well to Olivia, Olivia Paltry. At also, I guess technically, Hamilton County Public Works, but she's in charge of, Olivia's in charge of the floodplain management for the county. And Olivia has reviewed everything that we've submitted in. And those were the last two sheets, I think, in the construction drawing packet that we sent you. Where you saw all the floodplain diagrams and Olivia likes to see the amount of cut and the amount of fill that's happening and everything. And so she has seen all of that and her comments back to us are only that we're still working on to get to her. But again, because we haven't smiled for a permit, she wouldn't have issued approval yet. But she needs to see that all of our electric for the light poles and stuff is waterproofed. Electric for being in the floodplain and stuff and how we're taking care of and addressing the electric and the, and waterproofing. For those conduit and the light poles in the floodplain. So we're actively working with Olivia there. And then yes, Hamilton County Engineers Office, we have again, talked with them for many times over the past couple of years. And then yes, did do the traffic impact study that you saw. And basically Jeff Newby with Hamilton County Engineers Office, who's in charge of the traffic study then. And the roadway improvements or anything that happens out there. He's in verbally, is all in support of everything we've done, everything we're doing. Does not see any need for any improvements, changes, anything like that. So. But again, since the traffic impact study was just finalized. Because his original conversations to us did not, he, he didn't even request a traffic impact study. And that kind of came later in our conversations with him that where he said, yes, please do a traffic analysis for this project. And so that just got submitted in to him about a month or six weeks ago, four, six weeks ago or something like that. So he still is under review of, of the actual traffic impact study. But verbally, everything that we've reviewed and the meetings we had with him over the past year and a half, don't expect any issues there. City of Cincinnati, again, they basically viewed, hey, the curb cuts are operating the same as they were before. The venue part, you know, the capacity is the same. We don't see any traffic concerns. Did not require traffic impact study or anything there. And that was the exact same thing with ODOT. They were basically like, as far as we're concerned, all of our curb cuts are here. All the turn lanes are there. There's no need to widen this road any wider or do anything additional with traffic. And so both ODOT and City of Cincinnati, neither required any further traffic analysis or anything like that. The traffic study that was completed has been submitted to ODOT just as a courtesy set. As we told them that we would do, that we'd get them a courtesy copy of the traffic impact study. But as far as anything on the interstate, the ramps, anything like that, they're all like, we deal with this all the time right now. You're not making anything worse. And by anything with the, not having the pedestrians cross Kellogg Avenue up to those parking on the north side. You're really helping and making this better then too. So they feel like this is going to operate similar or better to what it does today. So that's kind of a summary then on some of those items that I heard as questions and where we were on the regulatory approval process. So that concludes what I wanted to say in my presentation. So. Open for any questions from us or any of the other team members then.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Elif, any questions on the applications?
Uh, yes. Just a couple though.
Yep.
I'm going to ask Mr. Honkamp, the same question I asked Paul, which is, is the parking required? I heard six thousand three hundred and forty eight spaces. And I'm hearing square footage amounts of the proposed venue and existing riverine. But we're not going to be running them at the same time, right?
Correct. That is correct. We will not be running them.
So that tells me that's why ODOT didn't care about more traffic, right?
Exactly. Correct.
Okay. So aren't we over parking this substantially then? Because they're not going to be running at the same time, right? Well, I wanted to hear what he had to say, but you can too.
Yeah, so they will not be run at the same time at full capacity. But they may be run at the same time, but only in compliance with the required parking for both City, City of Cincinnati and Anderson. So there may be a five thousand person venue at, at Farmer and a five thousand one at Riverbend. The new Farmer Arena is designed a little bit different, has I guess some more premium seating, a little more intimate offerings, if you will. But they, they could operate at the same time.
It's not too much more intimate. The seating capacities are about the same, right?
Right. I think, and I, I believe whoever designed the structure can speak to it more, but I think there's more like premium box seat offering.
Well, I mean, it looks really cool. I, yeah, I, I get all that, but as far as, okay. So you guys are telling me they're going to run them at the same time. I mean, I guess I don't know about concerts or that. But there, there's no way ODOT would not have required, if you're going to be running both, if you're going to double capacity. There's no way ODOT is going to say, we're good, you know, we don't need to look at, we don't even need a traffic study. That, that's like mind boggling if, if that's what they said. But I'm going to accept, I'm going to accept that, I guess, but I don't, I'm not seeing that. Okay. Thank you. Okay, I got another, maybe another question. There was discussion in the materials about regulated access. And I think the point the staff was trying to get at is like you drive by there, except in the summer. And it's like fenced off. Agree that, that, okay, let me just ask the question. Sorry, I'm going on. What about that? What about, how are we, because it's not provided, we didn't see it. They're asking for it. What about the eighty or seventy five percent of the time when nothing's going on down there? You know, maybe somebody, and maybe operationally you don't want it.
Right.
And maybe you just need to say that, but, but on the other hand, it might be nice to be able to park. In the large parking lot and walk around down there. I mean, what, what is the deal with pedestrian access when there's not something going on?
Right. Yeah. So I think there is that balance that yes, they do need security. They do need certain things and venues locked up. They can't, it's not an open public park. People can't come walk around the Coney Grove. They can't do it today. They couldn't do it previously when Coney Island owned it. You know, that's, there's risk and liability and theft and anything like that. And so there's still those same concerns. However, M E M I has said, yes, we acknowledge that there is this great open space through there. And so they have made the statement that they're willing to work with the township to kind of try to develop something. If there is a desire in a way that, okay, maybe on certain times, something could happen with a walkway or a pedestrian. And then for sure, obviously be, you know, on any concert nights, anybody can go and enjoy the, you know, along the river. Enjoy the Coney Grove and stuff like that. But non-concert nights, then that's where it would have to be more, a more specific conversation. Of what that would, what that would be and what that looked like. I don't know, Matt, if there's anything you would want to add to what those. I think future conversations between the township and M E M I might look like for more access there enhanced.
And if you could state your name and address and affiliation.
Matt, excuse me, Matt Dunn, Music and Event Management, M E M I, sixty two ninety five Kellogg Avenue. The answer to the question is, we've been talking to some of the trustees about, there was talk about a river overlook. Is the main thing that was talked about. And we would allow, we would allow people to come in the main entrance, go down and have people go down to the, I'm sorry, go down to the overlook. Whatever that overlook looked like, the trustees said, we might want to build something down there that would be non-invasive. Meaning that not, you know, five hundred, take up five hundred parking spaces or anything. And we would work out with the township and with the trustees, letting people come in, go to that riverwalk. See the riverwalk and then go back to their cars and a, as Craig said, walk down through the, the trees and the Coney Grove. We're, we're very open to that. It just, we, we have to work that out for security reasons. We can't have people going into areas that they shouldn't be. That's all. Does that answer the question pretty much?
Partially, yes.
Okay.
To me, it's like, it's like a college campus, right? You can go, although it's not obviously, but you can walk around it, but you can't get into the stadium, right? It's kind of like that.
Correct. I, I would say that that's.
Sorry, that wasn't a question. Okay. All right. Thank you. Yes, you did. Thanks for getting up and answering that as best you can. It's, I think it's a difficult question actually. Lastly, the sidewalk. From, okay, is there, it wouldn't be a big deal, would it? Since there's right of way to extend that on down and connect it so there's not a gap?
I guess, yeah, it depends. I'm not sure whether you're asking for M E M I to pay dollars, to write the check, to move, to extend the sidewalk in front of somebody else's property. That wasn't done at the time that Belterra was constructed then. Or physically, if you're just asking physically to do it, and I think yes, Mr. Drewry said that yes, there is right of way there.
No, to clarify my question, no, I'm not asking. Obviously physically it's conceivable. But as part of your project, extending that on, it is in right of way. Granted, it's off-site a little bit, but.
I would say my original concerns on that is, is we have not surveyed that area. And from just walking in and looking at it, the Belterra gets very close there. And I don't know that there's, there's space to do it without having to build a retaining wall to make that work. Because of the elevations and the grade and what's going on on Belterra. To get it from our property line to the traffic signal is going to be a little bit more substantial effort than just pouring a sidewalk through there or whatever. And that's, that's with, yeah, we have not done any engineering drawings or surveyed that area and done engineering drawings to see. But at a high level, it's when we heard that conversation talked about, about, oh man, this, where, because we were always wondering, yeah, where will this sidewalk go? And it's like, oh, it would go to the traffic signal. And then it was like, hmm, it's going to be a little different, a little bit more tricky than it looks up in the first blush. So that would be our response. I think before I would commit to the, or as the design professional representing M E M I. If they were to say, Craig, yes, we can do this or whatever, I'd say, hold on, let's figure out how much this is going to cost to do it. Because if it does involve a retaining wall or moving whatever fire hydrants and utilities or something like that or whatever. I wouldn't want them to go into it thinking it's a ten thousand dollar ad and it's a hundred thousand dollar ad instead or something. I just don't know that. So, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Elif. Mr. Lewis, any questions on the application?
Yeah, I'm going to continue on some of yours. Just, I didn't want to interrupt you, but. Clarification points, the grass parking on the north side is going away as well as the ride share that's there today. Next to Sutton.
Oh, yes. Correct.
Everything north. Just a yes or no?
The north side of Kellogg?
Yes, the north side.
Yes.
Okay. All right. And we talked about the sideways sidewalk width. What I would recommend or like to see is you go to at least the end of your property line and have it be. Patrons don't know where City of Cincinnati starts and Anderson Township starts or ends. So we'd like to see it be seamless and consistent along the Kellogg.
Yeah, let me get to that exhibit to make sure I understand, Mr. Lewis, the exact question then.
The first one or the second one?
So the sidewalk that we're extending from Sutton, it already comes to Sutton. And then it crosses, as Mr. Drewry said, it crosses to the north side. So we're extending it on the south side from Sutton to our property line there.
Toward the east.
To the east. Correct.
That's okay. Great.
Yep. Perfect.
But the, the width, sorry, Mr. Lewis. I think your question is the width on the City of Cincinnati side, is that six feet like you're proposing on the Anderson Township side?
I believe it is wider on the City of Cincinnati side because that's the Ohio Bike Trail, which technically then crosses there. And continues all the way along the north side.
Yeah, yes, I think we, we'd love for it to be the same width. And if you had to put a sign up saying, you know, bikes go this way, cross and the Ohio River Trail continues on the other side, Paul.
So is there a benefit though? So is there a benefit though to cross, and this is just Craig Honcom thinking about this, then? So if you're on the bike trail coming from the City of Cincinnati, coming across, and you have to cross to the north side somewhere.
You cross at Sutton.
But what do you cross at Sutton versus going down in front of Belterra and cross?
So what we're saying is where there isn't a sidewalk today, we'd want to see one.
Yeah.
For pedestrian traffic, more than bikes.
Yeah.
Okay. And just a comment about the traffic impact study. You said that you're not going to make it worse. I'm like, well, this is an opportunity to make it better.
Yeah.
So, whatever we can do, I attend quite a few of those. I can hear the music from my house. So it's, it's always leaving is the hardest part.
Yeah. We, from a operations and safety standpoint, I feel confident to say it will be made better by not having pedestrians crossing to the north side of Kellogg. Number one, safer, better, everything right there. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I had no other.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Ms. DeFossi.
Not really a question, but kind of to follow up on something Paul had talked about. My greatest concern really is the pedestrian and vehicular flow within the parking lot. When you have that many cars and that many people, you people are coming and going, getting in and out of their cars. I guess I would just like to see if there's some improvements to be made there.
Right.
And what that looks like, I don't know, but I think that there's an opportunity there.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ward.
No other questions. Thanks.
Okay. So I have a host of questions.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you all very much. Happy to come back up and answer more questions later.
Okay. Don't, I've got a host. I've got a variety of questions. Sorry, Craig.
Oh, sorry. I forgot. You didn't ask yours yet. The chair was waiting till the end.
I always wait till the end. Then everyone covers mine. I don't have to ask anything.
Eager to go sit down?
So you don't have to go on the specifics, but stormwater detention, is it all going to Lake Como?
Stormwater detention, quantity control is not required by either Hamilton County or the City of Cincinnati side since we're immediately adjacent to the river and in the floodplain. They are both requiring water quality, and we've got water quality units, basically, the, or the swirl chambers that we're doing on both sides then, yeah, to meet those regulations.
So for heavy rains after an event and people walking across, it's going to sort of sheet flow towards the river, for lack of a better
Yeah, we hit.
technical term?
What we have, and I won't go, we have the utility plan, the construction line sheets, and I don't know, we're probably adding like 20 catch basins. It's a lot, 15 catch basins or something that's in, on this new parking lot side. So we are collecting all that water. We're piping it all to, there's a large, you know, the creek that comes down Sutton gets into 102 inch sewer right on the north side of Kellogg. That 102 inch sewer then curves across our parking lot, then, and discharges just to the east side between Belterra and existing Riverbend. So all of our stormwater drainage for the new parking lot gets collected in a series of those 15 or 20 catch basins then, gets piped in that 102 and goes out to the river. Yeah.
So with that, knowing that you're kind of increasing the impervious surface area, does that 102 inch have the capacity and not restrict anything upstream, so to speak?
Correct. Yes, it does. Yes.
Okay. Sidewalk next to, adjacent to Kellogg, you know, for this on the very far right, it looks like there's really no buffer between the turn lane and the sidewalk. So that's going to be just sort of a curb to sidewalk transition?
Right. Yeah, no tree lawn there, a street, yeah, green lawn. Yeah.
No protection of the potential walking paths of people and things like that?
Yeah, and I think mainly because we feel it's okay because it is just a turn lane. It's not the, you're not going 45 miles an hour or whatever, right next up to a through lane. And since it's up against, it's just that portion where the drop, where you're basically the eastbound right turn lane into Belterra then is what pushes over. So then you're slowing down to make that turn and stuff. And so, yeah, we don't have that, any extra buffer there between the walk and the curb.
And then the fence design, talk about, you know, you're going to be following the Belterra fencing and the Coney fencing. As far as the entrances on, I'm assuming those are going to be gated and it'll follow that same design of the fence?
Correct. Yes. Yeah.
Sight lighting, the photometric plan that we received had a height of 20 feet. Is that total mounting height at 20 feet or is that 20 foot pole on a four foot base? Or what is that sort of mixture?
Ms. Sigmund, do you know the answer to that question?
I do not, but we can get that to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
I always like to ask one.
Yeah, I don't know if the, if the pole detail, the basin, the pole detail was on our construction drawing sheet, then, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can coordinate with staff on that and, yeah.
Kind of what, and then fixture type, is that going to be a total cutoff fixture?
LED, and I apologize, I did not bring or think to bring the electrical engineer tonight. And I'm not sure, I know we, we basically concentrated on meeting the photometrics that we needed to at the right of way line then, to not spill out. But when you say a total cutoff, I would venture, like, our light poles that are in the center of the parking lot are probably not a total cutoff because they would spread light across that parking lot.
I guess.
Right.
Description is, you know, some fixture will have the lens below the housing.
Yeah.
And what I'm referring to is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, goes down. Right, yeah.
Being flush with the bottom of the actual.
Correct. Yeah. Okay. Thank you for helping me out on the electrical engineering side. Yeah, I know exactly what you're saying now. Yeah, these, the light fixtures are all recessed up into there or whatever. Right, yes.
Because, you know, with the lens below the housing, then it's more light pollution.
Correct. Yeah.
Comes out of those. So it'll be sort of a cutoff fixture.
Cut off fixtures. Correct. Yes.
Other ride share on the east property line, is that for all three venues?
Yes. Yeah, no, they would all operate, and correct me, Matt, if I'm wrong, but they would all operate in that location then. Yeah, the, the ride share on the far east to the parking lot, it's up here on the top, on the right side of your screen. And then I can go to that, yeah, so this diagram, then the other ride share that's labeled Zone One, that would operate there for the new venue and PNC and existing Riverbend. Correct. So those are the ride shares that'll operate for all of them. Yes.
And then is there any wayfinding, you know, signage or something to get you from, you know, the Farmer venue, which is sort of on the very far west to the east side, you know? Right now, it's sort of not designated well to get to the north side of Kellogg where it runs out of.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. And maybe this is a little bit what Ms. Ward was, or Ms. Ward or Mr. DeFoss, one of, was bringing up there or whatever about the, the potential considerations in that parking lot. But our construction drawings right now do not have an additional signage or wayfinding package for those, kind of those arrows and those pathways. So that is not part of the construction drawing set at this time, right? Yeah.
All right. And then, you know, some of the other commissions talked about the pedestrian path, you know, to Kellogg. You know, currently, the entrance drive that goes through the portal, you know, has a chain. And then to the right side or the west side is the pedestrian path.
Yeah.
So that'll go away. So is there any sort of plans of, from the public sidewalk along Kellogg, to have a pathway through to all three venues? And I know the one is in Cincinnati, but the two current ones?
Yeah, I don't think I have a great diagram to flip to that would show that and without having a mouse to zoom in or something. Excuse me. Is what I think though, Mr. Gothard, where the main portal is, that's the vehicular entry. And then you're talking about on the left and the right of that, there's pedestrian gateways. Those are not going away. So those pedestrian gateways would still be there and access into the site from Kellogg.
Okay. But currently, after you go through the gateway, there is sort of vehicular
Yeah.
on the east side, and there's bollards with a chain across.
On the west side.
Pedestrian on the west side.
And that still stays. Yeah, that pedestrian sidewalk, and that's kind of the orange line that runs there, right along the jurisdiction line between the City of Cincinnati. Is that corridor that you're talking about with the, whatever, it's like a 10 foot wide asphalt pavement, it's got the chain and bollards. And it goes all the way up then to the gateway, and that access pathway can be used. So if you are walking, say if you live in California or walking down the sidewalk and wanted to come in, you could come right down to Sutton, go through there and walk right on that sidewalk and come in. Correct. Yeah.
I think I'm getting close to the end.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, on the west side of the parking lot, it shows, you know, sort of head and parking at the drive aisle. And this is a little hard to see, but you know, along.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. Yeah.
So if, if sort of everyone's leaving the venue, they're going east and west through the main parking area, and now they're funneling out. But you have people parked along that row, which is probably about 40, throwing a dart at it, 40 spaces.
They have to walk between those cars to get to that main sidewalk we were just talking about. Correct.
And also the cars backing out of that space, knowing that everyone's funneling through that drive. You know, is that going to, you know, in my opinion, that's going to be a bottleneck within the parking flow.
Let me.
And I'm looking at L 205 just because that's an easy one for me to reference.
Oh, the landscape sheet all the way at the end, then. Yeah, I'm not going to flip through 100 pages to get to that at the end. But, yeah, so is what, and I'll speak for a moment, Scott, and then if you got to add any, feel free to. But basically, because where the gate, the vehicul, vehicular entry points to the Anderson lot are gates four and five over on the west, on the east side. All that vehicular traffic is coming in this way towards the parking spaces. They'll fill them there and then work their way back out. So that tra, so the pedestrian traffic then has minimal conflict. And it's kind of the way that any venue that would park this, or when you go to the church festival or whatever, they're parking there and working their way out. And so the operations then, for the parking operations, will park them on the west and then they fill up to the east because those entry gates are on the east. Sutton, the only access vehicles that'll be coming in that main Sutton traffic signal now is to get over to the VIP parking lot then. And so there's very little traffic there, and there should be no traffic, although it's kind of that main corridor run through there. There should be very little vehicular traffic on a pre or post concert in that driveway because everybody's coming in and out over on the east side where those gates are, four and five, and the ride share is. So it should be a lot less vehicular conflict than you might intuitively think, knowing that there's that driveway there that is, does kind of seem like a nice spine driveway, but it's really going to be rarely used, should be rarely used.
I think current operations that, you know, portal is closed to vehicular traffic.
Yeah.
There's no in and out of vehicles at that location.
And that was a lot of our conversations over the last couple of years and quite a bit with Matt Dunn at MEMI about where we were doing ride share, and we evaluated lots of options for ride share. And some options did use that center gateway and portal and stuff like that. And that was some of the cons of that option was then the people that were parking in that parking lot then were continually crossing that ride share stream. And so keeping that ride share stream all the way on the east side is actually a benefit then to keeping that relatively open pedestrian flow from the parking lot over to the new venue.
I guess I, I thought I kept the traffic flow readily accessible, but I don't. So, refresh my memory, is there, is that portal going to be closed to in and out traffic during an event?
So is what, and Matt will be able to correct me if I'm wrong, but, so it'll be open for the VIP parking to go in and out. VIP is only 600 spaces there. That'll have access to it.
Over by the Farmer on the south side.
Yeah, where the parking lot is.
Immediate right. Once you go through the gate, you turn right.
Turn right and right. Correct. Yeah.
And then then VIP parking. Okay.
Correct.
So there'll be sort of signs there to say VIP parking all the way.
Only, correct. And then in the post-concert situation, everybody would be exiting those two gates until Sutton. On the far east to the far west.
Center gate will be sort of restricted.
It'll only be VIP until once VIP is let out. And then if there's still, you know, 500 or 700 or 1,000, you know, whatever cars sitting in this parking lot, still trying to get out and go the other way. Matt did say that, yeah, they would operate, they would open that up. But otherwise, that section of Kellogg is all closed, all across the center, from gates one and two on the left to four and five on the right, and that center is all closed. But once VIP is out, there would be the potential that, and I guess Matt was explaining this, is that they have a very fluid operation then where they're all on radios and watching traffic and with the police officers and traffic control. And it's like, okay, we can get, let people out here now because there's nobody else using this, and use it for a benefit then to help relieve traffic faster and better. So to say it, it won't be used normally, but at the end of a concert, they do envision that they could open that portal up and use it then.
Yeah, because I, I'm looking at the parking field and I'm saying, if I'm somewhere in the center and I see there's an outlet to the west, man, I'm heading there. I'm sorry.
Our plan is with GBBN and with Scott, we're going to have wayfinding, as we discussed, on how to tell people how to go from the Farmer Music Center to go across, and they're, they're going to go across the bottom of that parking lot and then enter the parking lot from the bottom. And then, as Craig is saying, what we do is we keep it very fluid as people are exiting. And there is no traffic going across Kellogg from, we call it Gate Two, the main entrance of Coney. There is no pedestrian traffic. So once the VIPs are out, and if there's any, as Craig was saying, if there's any people left in the new lot where the pool was, then we would take them out and we would take them either left or right, depending on where the least amount of traffic is. So again, fluid, we just, we try and get the traffic out as we move.
Yeah, but they won't have an option left or right.
They will not.
Dictate left or right.
We will dictate. That is correct. It is not an optional thing, go left or right. They'll go which direction we tell them.
Hopefully. So, I guess, two additional questions. You know, we talked about the 6,348 total spaces and the venue's going to be operated. And I know that's, my question is really on Cincinnati, but the grass overflow lots, are they grass? Or is it vehicular, you know, pavement with grass growing through it? Or, you know, how are those constructed? A spring rain, you know, where maybe they cannot be accessed? You know, if it doesn't have some sort of vehicular, you know, pavement underneath.
Yeah. So the north, all the ones are existing grass today that they're using, and they use them in all those same conditions. And so the intention is to not modify those, and those will be existing grass continued to be used as grass. The overflow that's on the far left side of the screen, the far west side, that one is one that's being expanded. And it'll, again, there's some existing kind of broken up asphalt grass there. That'll all remain as it is. And then the expansion then will just be new grass lawn turf area then, right? So, yeah, but it is not reinforced turf. It's not grass pavers or anything like that, correct, that's been there today? And they think, I assume, just, I'm a civil engineer, not a geotechnical engineer. But I think given the soil types there and this floodplain and stuff with the high amount of sand and silts and clays there, that it compacts very well, and that's why they don't have issues in the, you know, rain, and they've been parking on it for, you know, many, many years. But it may take a little bit of time on those new, brand new parking lot over there on the west for that to get compacted in or whatever to, yeah.
I think that's all my questions. Thank you very much.
Great.
So, would anyone else like to speak in favor or the applicants still have additional things to add?
We just wanted to make sure the commission was clear on the capacity. So, Mr., if there are questions or he wants to reiterate maybe what I was saying more articulately, that would be helpful.
So, this was perhaps my understanding of what you were saying isn't correct, Mr. Ellis. You, you made a comment that may have just been in conversation, but you said, I don't see how if, if you're doubling the capacity, ODOT would not have a response, want to see what the effect of that is. That's not entirely what's being proposed here. It's not that we're doubling, we would not be using two facilities at the same time that would double the capacity. You haven't, you have a limited number of parking spaces. And then there's an equation that gets you to how many patrons you can have on site at any one time. So hypothetically, you could have a few people in each of the three venues at the same time as long as you don't exceed the number of parking spaces that would be required by that. I think that's the intent of what we're saying. That's not a practical.
Would that be limiting the sales of tickets or would it be self-regulated?
That's not something that would happen, but I'm just. That's not something that would happen, but I'm just, the, it's more to make a point that, um, first things first, clarifying, there's no proposal here that would, that you would be doubling the capacity of the amount of cars that are happening there, or the number of patrons.
Well, I simply say that, I guess, I don't know if this is not time for debate really, although it's sounding like that a little bit.
No, I just wanted to try to clarify.
But, um, no, when I look at the, the seating capacity of the new one and compare it to the existing, they're very close, they're within a couple thousand seats. So, I understand what you're saying theoretically, oh, there might be a few sprinkled here and a few sprinkled there. I, I personally don't believe practically it will operate that way, but I'm just the zoning commissioner, I'm not the operations person, but I'm just like struggling with all this, um, parking and how it's going to work, and I'm not getting a clear picture in my mind of how this is going to function practically, except that the new venue is gonna go great, and I can't speak for the other venues, the smaller one will probably be okay, but.
Yeah, I think, thank you.
Thanks for trying to answer my question.
Thank you for clarification.
I think the, the short answer is I don't think we could operate them both at the same time legally.
I've got a, if, if we're using the parking count as a basis for the number of vehicles or the use of the three facilities, but we're increasing the number of parking spaces, aren't we then increasing the volume of traffic coming in?
Well, I would argue you're, you're taking traffic off of the street as well, which was a, a problem in the past, was parking along the actual street. So we created more capacity, more space allows for more free movement of cars, it's easier logistically to get them in and out, having more space and the more spaces. But we'll still be operating in the confines of the law on both sides, both jurisdictions, as far as occupancy and how many people we actually have wi- within the arenas simultaneously. I just didn't want, I didn't want the commission to feel we were misled by saying we're only gonna rock Riverbend on one day and Farmer on the next. Is it, that may not be the case, I can't say that it's the plan, but they could theoretically be operated at the same time, just not at full capacity, we couldn't have nineteen thousand five hundred and one and twenty-one thousand five hundred and the others, couldn't, we couldn't do it legally. That, I just wanted to be clear on that.
Okay, I think it's still a little gray in my mind, you know, but I, I don't know if the zoning commission, you know, I think we're looking at the whole. Um, anyone else like to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward and state your name and address and affiliation to the case.
Hello, my name is Guy Wolf, my address is six thousand one Stirrup Road, and my affiliation is I have been a occasional visitor, and I intend to be a very frequent one at the new, uh, facility. Um, I, I do have a few notes though, 'cause, uh, most of my concern is around the handling of lighting for the events.
Are you speaking in favor or opposed?
I am speaking in favor, I think this is the right thing, I think there are things that we haven't heard yet. Uh, Mr. Gothard, you asked one question about it in particular that I'd wanna cover, but there's a few others that, that should be conditions. I think we have a, a reference to the, uh, lighting plan, not having the foot candles at the, uh, at the perimeter ne- needing to be put into that, um, and, and perhaps the applicant can respond to these real time tonight as I go through these.
Okay, if you could, you know, again, address everything to the commission, that's, uh, the procedures we have to follow, thank you.
Chairman, is there a three-minute, standard three-minute limit?
You know, let's, let's see, you know, go ahead and ask your questions and we'll see, you know, just continue to make progress, please.
Yeah, I, I thought I heard four minutes.
It's four minutes.
I'll, I'll go right through this. Good evening, I, I said my name and address and my affiliation. Uh, I think this is a great addition, it makes, uh, the community, can make the community more attractive and safer. And I urge the board to ensure that the approval of this parking addition includes conditions that protect our night environment and the neighborhood character. Five recommendations here on lighting conditions. Item number four, and I'll address this one first because it was addressed during the discussion, and that is to maintain dark buffer zones. Preserve or enhance the vegetative buffers between the parking area and nearby homes or open spaces to further reduce light trespass. I'm not sure if that was the intent of the applicant to reduce light trespass, but I do support their requested variance to expand the perimeter landscaping in lieu of the islands in the interior. Um, it improves the environmental impact by expanding wildlife corridors, uh, something that the island simply cannot do. It also improves the neighborhood impact by screening sightlines and reducing light trespass. Um, item, uh, at the top here, item number one was, uh, something I think you addressed, Mr. Gothard, is require dark sky compliant fixtures. All lighting should be fully shielded and downward facing, in other words, no uplighting or visible bulbs. Fixtures should be dark sky approved or equivalent to prevent glare into adjacent properties and the sky. Um, a, a side note, it's also a safety issue, uh, after these concerts, it's dark, people are walking to cars, and I think we've all seen it with a glaring light that's sticking out, outside of the hood. It actually hides pedestrians, makes them difficult to see. Uh, just like if I had a bright light shining behind me, you wouldn't see my features. Item number two is limit the brightness and color temperature. Maximum brightness should not exceed three thousand lumens per fixture in the parking and perimeter areas, and the color temperature should not exceed three thousand Kelvin or warm white, warm white in order to reduce the glare and blue light pollution. Uh, item number three, use motion or event-based controls. Lighting should be fully on during events or active use, dimmed afterward and turned off overnight or when no events occur. And finally, I require a post-installation lighting audit. Prior to occupancy, conduct an independent verification that installed fixtures meet the brightness, shielding, and control standards with a measurable foot candle plan submitted to the township. In conclusion, Anderson Township has a reputation for thoughtful development. By requiring these conditions, the board will ensure safety for guests while preserving the night sky and the quality of life for nearby residents. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
And I'll, happy to answer any questions.
Could you forward just electronically this stat?
Um, yes, I'll send it to you, Mr. Drury.
I, I will give you a paper copy after the meeting.
Yeah, I'll get you a word copy. Thank you.
Any questions of the speaker? Okay, thank you, anyone else like to speak in favor of the application? Okay, again, please state your name and address and affiliation.
Uh, my name is Tom Purdue, um, twenty-three seventy-three Rank Court, Bright, Indiana. Um, my affiliation, I've been with Summer Fair, I'm starting my forty-second year. I can't say anything but, um, MEMI has been great. They've helped us work around while they're constructing, and from the presentation that I saw tonight, even though I haven't done a case study on parking, I just know from historically, we need more parking for Summer Fair. And when you're talking about possibly using this as a year-round place, you're talking about those islands, we've had to in the past sometimes park across Kellogg Avenue. And with the new venue taking up some of that space that we use there, having that additional parking would prevent us from needing to park across Kellogg and people walk across Kellogg, which you were already talking about, that's something that you wanna avoid. So, um, the only thing that I didn't hear is if they would put in their plan, uh, it rained this year on our Friday, so if they could not have rain there, that would be, that would be great, but, uh, I really enjoyed the presentation and, and all of your attentiveness, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor of the application? Okay, seeing no one motioning, anyone like to speak opposed to the application? Okay, um, if it's okay with the commission.
I have a question, Paul, back with staff.
Okay.
Well, Paul, I was involved with the Riverfront Entertainment District where we did all that, and we, we talked at one time about having a walkway right along the river. And we said a few things about tonight, is there a plan of the township?
So, we've had Ohio Riverfront plan for quite some time, probably the early one that you were referring to, we updated it, and then we did the gateway, the Kellogg gateway study, so it's also been mentioned in our comprehensive plan. And the vision, because the Ohio River is one of our best assets in the township, we have this huge riverfront and no access for people to get to the river. So that's why it's always been included in our riverfront plans, um, to have some access to the river, whether it's patrons to this, to a concert, whether it's somebody riding their bike on the Ohio River Trail, whether it's a township resident, you know, anyone using those trails down there, and also, you know, if the, our plans call for year-round use of these properties so that it's not a, a desert during non-concert season, um, whether it's if they had development on their sites, uh, or on their, in their parking, or whether it's just access to the river, so that's why that was mentioned in all of our plans, and that's why it was also mentioned with this application.
We don't have an easement or anything, but we talked about putting like a boat ramp down in Cardi, all right?
We, um, yes, the township does still own the boat, it's the Boatsmith property, so the township does still own that, and there has been discussion of providing access to the river there. Um, it's always been discussed, um, with, with Riverbend and Coney of potentially having access to the river through their property.
But asking versus having an easement.
There's no current easement, no, no, but that was why it's been discussed with this application, with the new venue being constructed. You know, how, how can we partner with them to provide some kind of access? Just like downtown with the Brady Center, where their line opens up to sidewalks and access downtown, there's some limited access, of course, when concerts are going on, but when concerts are not going on, there's partnerships that allow people to, to use the property, so, again, those discussions have been just ongoing. Now is probably a great time to continue those discussions to see how, you know, there could be access to the river.
I would like to have the applicant come up and talk a little bit more about the site lighting, you know, um, you know, sort of reiterate the fixture type, um, you know. I'm sure you probably don't know the Kelvin rating of the LED lights that you're gonna be installing, but, you know, um, and then really how you arrived at the design, and then probably a question I should ask is, you know, after an event or a non-event night, you know, how are they gonna be operated? I assume there's gonna be some lights on for security purposes, but, you know, sort of speak to those avenues would help me, yes. Again, because we're going in and out, if you could say your name and address and.
No problem, excuse me, Matt Dunn, MEMI, sixty-two ninety-five Kellogg Avenue. Um, to answer your question, the, the same way we do it right now, which would be on non-concert nights, we turn all the lights off. If it's being used for anything, if, even if there's not a concert, if we're using it, uh, there's a, uh, we use, sometimes use parking lots for, I can't remember the name of it, but it's a, a kid's drug and teaching them how to drive. We would leave the lights on, but we're only, the lights would only be on when it was in use. We turn the lights off every night, and especially at the end of a concert, they're not left on. Our, we have people that turn the lights off whenever all the cars are gone, all the lights are turned off.
Okay.
Is that, anything else, lighting?
Uh, no, I think, you know, I think we have on record, it's gonna be what I termed a cutoff fixture, that, that light is gonna be within, totally within the housing, is, that's an, not an accurate description, now's the time to tell us, um, so. It's true. And we could put that in the resolution, quite frankly. Yeah, we'll, we'll just put it, if it's okay with the staff, whoever makes a resolution, you know, recommendation, we'll just put that into there.
The, the photometric drawing sheet does say that it is a twenty-foot mounting height above finish grade, and it does say the point-two-foot candles at the property line, um, max, maximum point-two-foot candles at the property line, and then shows, yeah, the foot candles around the site and that are coming out from the poles. But we did not provide the fixture cut sheets to the township. It would be in our construction document set, but I don't have that construction document set with me, so Scott's gonna see if he can pull it up then.
And again, we can put it into a motion, um, you know, 'cause I'm a, I'm imagining you've got three or four different manufacturers, and you say this type, you don't know the exact type at this time.
Correct, yes, since it hasn't been bid and we haven't got shop drawings or anything like that, exactly, correct, yeah.
Okay, um, amongst the commission, I won't poll individually, but anyone else have any questions to the applicant or any of the, okay, or staff? Seeing none, um, believe it or not, I don't have any more, so that's good. Uh, we will close the public hearing at this point in time and open discussion amongst the commission members. So, Mr. Eliff, you're closest to me, we'll start with you.
Me?
Yes.
Well, I have a couple things I'd like to throw out and see if the commission.